Good afternoon. Before we begin our regular agenda at the review session of the New York City Planning Commission, we have a special presentation by HPD and DCP staff on the Where We Live report. Looks like production started sharing, and we have Michael Sandler and Howard Slackin.
Good afternoon.
There we go.
Hello.
Just wanted to make sure you were able to talk.
I am. I don't know if Howard is kicking us off. I didn't, I don't actually see slides also.
Yeah.
When the slides come back, Mike, you can just go ahead and kick us off.
Great.
Yeah. Success.
It's great to see all of the commissioners again. My name is Michael Sandler, the Director of Neighborhood Planning at HPD. Happy to be here to present, rare opportunity presented review session for non-DCP staff. So excited to be here. We're presenting on Where We Live NYC, this city's recently released Comprehensive Fair Housing Plan. We'll talk about what the, what the plan is, how we got to what it is now, and have some time for questions. Next slide, please. So I think I don't need to tell the commission, but just to review, our city has been shaped by a legacy of intentional policies and practices that have created segregated living patterns. From the maps you see in front of you, these redlining maps of Upper Manhattan and the Bronx, which directed where banks could or should lend based on the racial demographics of those neighborhoods, to city-financed housing developments that were racially segregated, from the early NYCHA developments to city-supported projects like Stuyvesant Town, or Parkchester in the Bronx, to whole sort of neighborhood-scale developments like you see in parts of Queens. I'm sitting today in Jackson Heights in a building that was once explicitly segregated and not accessible to blacks or Jews in the apartment that I'm in now. So thankfully, that has changed. Next slide, please. The 1968 Fair Housing Act was a civil rights era legislation designed to protect people and to counter these intentional practices. It covers seven protected classes: race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, and family status. But unique amongst the 1960s civil rights legislation, it included an affirmative mandate. This mandate to affirmatively further the Fair Housing Act's goals, to proactively counter patterns of segregation. This was, as I said, unique to 1960s civil rights legislations. It was never made particularly clear to municipalities that receive HUD funding, how they should affirmatively further fair housing, or how that would be judged by the federal government until 2015. Next slide, please. The Obama administration released an Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Rule and Guidebook, and an obligation for cities to conduct an assessment of fair housing every five years. In that guidebook, they clarified that affirmatively furthering fair housing means expanding residents' housing choices so that households have the information and options to live where they choose, without discrimination and other barriers, and that their choices realistically include housing options in integrated areas and areas with access to opportunity. Next slide. So Where We Live NYC is the city's effort to analyze our efforts to affirmably further fair housing and put together a proactive plan to do that. It's our plan to confront segregation, fight discrimination, and take action to advance opportunity for all. Key components of the plan are extensive community participation, data and policy analysis, measurable goals and strategies, and the release of a draft public report, which was released in January, followed by a public comment period, citywide listening tour, and culminated in our final report being submitted to HUD. Next slide, please. So the, the planning for this was led by, jointly by HPD and NYCHA, with extensive participation from the Department of City Planning, around 30 other city agencies. This chart shows the key components of the project. So data analysis, starting at the very beginning of the project. A, we created a fair housing stakeholder group, which I will speak more of in a few minutes. We conducted community conversations. These were focus group-style meetings held in neighborhoods across the city. I'll also speak more about these in a minute. We held public events, and as I said, partnerships with over 30 mayoral offices and agencies, all of which fed into this draft plan, which was released in January, and the final, which was released last month. Next slide, please. So as I said, we created a fair housing stakeholder group. This was a relatively open invite. We invited over 300 individuals and organizations to participate. We had about 150 active participants from advocates, service providers, researchers, and community leaders that helped the city understand existing conditions and the root causes of fair housing issues. We really started at the beginning with our stakeholder group, to providing feedback on the preliminary data analysis, and how we should be looking at and interpreting the data that's in the plan, and giving input into goals and strategies. They met through a series of around 14 interactive workshops and briefings over the course of around a year. Next slide, please. As I said, we also hosted what we called community conversations. We contracted with Hester Street and a series of 14, or sorry, I think it's 12, community-based organizations to hold focus group-style meetings in neighborhoods around the city. These were conducted without city staff in the room, based on a toolkit of activities that were created by HPD and Hester Street. Through these, we, we spoke to around 700 New Yorkers in 15 different languages. And these were held, not translated events, but were held in folks' native language. And you can see some of the activities that we had here, but we started with a presentation about history and about how we became a segregated city, followed by discussion about the forces that shape people's housing choices. Why do they move to the homes that they move in? To what extent are those choices? Are they being pushed or pulled to those homes? And also included room for participants to discuss what they want to see the city do about this. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go through a few slides of just kind of what we learned through this process. The, the report itself is over 200 pages, includes extensive analysis, a discussion of our city's history. If you have not yet read it, I do encourage you to read the full report. This is really not even a tip of the iceberg, what I'm about to go through now, but just some, some big highlights. And this is combining all of those different inputs that you saw on that graphic a few slides ago, combining what we heard from these community conversations, the stakeholder group, our inter-agency analysis, and our extensive data analysis. Next slide, please. So this is, chart should not be unfamiliar to the commission. This is a dot density map showing where New Yorkers live, based on the four major racial categories collected in census data. You can see from this map that New York City's neighborhoods remain segregated, though New York City is also the most diverse city in the country. So there's more diversity on this map than you would see in, in a map of any really other city. But you can see clear clustering of New Yorkers by race. Next slide, please. We spent a lot of time in our community conversations and in our fair housing stakeholder group, trying to understand what, how New Yorkers feel about integration, or concepts of integration and diversity. It became very clear from those conversations that New Yorkers have different definitions of what an integrated community means. For many participants, equity mattered much more than integration. Folks felt that their, their communities should have services and amenities regardless of the racial demographics of their neighborhood, and should be able to have those services and amenities without having, you know, what they perceive to be gentrification. That white people moving to their neighborhood and bringing services is not what folks think of when they think of integration. We heard a lot about quote-unquote ethnic enclaves, sort of areas where there's clustering of a specific ethnicity, about how enclaves offer both opportunities, opportunities to have services in your native language, to access faith communities, job opportunities, but also offer limitations. We heard from a lot of folks that they did not feel that they had the opportunity to live in anywhere but an ethnic enclave, and how that shapes folks' lives. As I mentioned previously, gentrification, this is a concept that came up a lot, but the gentrification is not perceived as successful or sustainable integration. And the integration and diversity can lead to stronger communities, but that takes intentional work. That it doesn't, that those types of coalition buildings and the strength that can come from having diverse communities doesn't happen naturally. Next slide, please. This is just going in, we have a lot more detail in the report, as I said, about residential living patterns by race, and you saw clear geographic clustering on the previous dot density map. But we also found that certain types of New Yorkers are much more segregated than others. And so this map is showing where black elementary school children live. This is where they live, not where they go to school. But you can see that households, black households with children are very intensely concentrated in southeast Queens, East Brooklyn, southeast Queens, and the North Bronx, and much more concentrated than the map we saw previously. Next slide, please. And just because our neighborhoods remain segregated doesn't mean they have not changed significantly. This map is showing where white New Yorkers live, the change from 1992 to today. So the darkest pink areas of this map are where there were significant reductions in the share of the population that is white. So you can see in eastern Queens, South Brooklyn, North Staten Island, major reductions up to, you know, 63% of the share of a neighborhood being reduced, most likely in places like Canarsie, for example. And next slide, please. We see similar patterns when looking at other racial categories. We've only included two for this, but this, this map is showing where black New Yorkers live changed from 1990. So you see in the darkest, I guess that's blue or teal. I apologize, I'm actually colorblind. But the, almost a half in the neighborhoods where the share of black residents reduced by almost 50%. And then areas where the black, share of black population was increased, again, in South Brooklyn and southeast Queens. So it's, it's almost an inverse of the previous map, but not, but not completely. Next slide, please. So I'll talk a little bit about why this matters, that, you know, many New Yorkers, especially people of color and people with disabilities, do not have equal access to opportunity due to historic and present-day injustices. Next slide, please. So this chart is a little confusing, so I'll take a second with it. But it's showing sort of the connection between race, place, and poverty. In blue, you see low-poverty census tracts, or the share of each racial group in low-poverty census tracts. In yellow, high-poverty census tracts, and in gray, New York City overall. So black and Hispanic New Yorkers are far more likely to live in high-poverty neighborhoods than white New Yorkers. So you see that around 50% of the inhabitants of high-poverty census tracts, these are census tracts where more than 40% of the population are living below the federal poverty level. About half of the residents of those neighborhoods are Hispanic, whereas only 29% of the city's population is Hispanic. Conversely, you see that white, white residents make up over half of the residents of low-poverty census tracts. Low-poverty census tracts being census tracts where less than 10% of the population is below the federal poverty level. White New Yorkers make up over half of the residents of these areas, but only 32% of the residents of the city overall. Next slide, please. And just a couple other maps showing disparities of different types. And we have a ton of these throughout the report, looking at the connection between folks' access to opportunity and outcomes, based on where they live. So this is showing the percent of residents of each, I believe this is NTAs, Neighborhood Tabulation Areas, with unscoreable or subprime credit. And you can see that in, in parts of Brooklyn and the Bronx and southeast Queens, and going back to the maps we previously looked at, there are areas with large black and Latino populations. In a lot of these areas, around half of residents have unscoreable or some subprime credit, which can be difficult even to rent an apartment with no credit. And, next slide, please. This is showing some health outcomes. So this shows child emergency department visits. And you can see that in East Harlem and the Bronx, children are up to 15 times more likely to visit the emergency room because of asthma-related conditions, as children who live on the Upper East Side. And, and as I said, these are just two examples of what are numerous examples in the report of clear geographic, geographic disparities within our city that are, that are, we believe, connected to race. Next slide. And just showing a little bit about housing construction and how that contributes to some of these, and we'll talk more about this in a minute, but this map is showing completed housing units in new buildings over the last eight years, showing new housing is, has occurred in predominantly high-density central neighborhoods. And next slide, we also looked at where affordable housing is constructed and preserved. So this chart shows, this map is showing housing in New York, new construction units from 2014. You can see that it is not spread evenly throughout the city. There are certain neighborhoods where we've created much more affordable housing than others, though this map does show wider geographic spread than the previous map of new housing construction overall. Next slide, please. This is affordable housing preservation over that same time period. And you can see, you know, we have financed the preservation of affordable housing in neighborhoods around the city, but also clear geographic clustering in this department as well. The slightly different types of neighborhoods, we've been able to serve with preservation than with our new construction. More, you see more in some high-cost neighborhoods here than on the previous map. Next slide. So why, why did, why is this the case? The report has a significant analysis about different barriers to achieving fair housing. Next slide, please. So we heard from community conversations and from our fair housing stakeholders that present-day discrimination remains a major challenge, that discrimination in the housing market is pervasive and deeply impacts folks', folks' ability to access housing. We also heard that New Yorkers face discriminatory conduct, not only when they're looking for housing, but also in their experiences of tenants. We heard about differential treatment of different types of tenants within a building. Folks wanted the city to focus on that as a fair housing issue, not just on housing searches. We heard that current enforcement procedures and delays in enforcement can leave residents feeling powerless, that we do have some mechanisms to enforce when folks feel that their rights have been violated, but that those are not empowered, that is not an empowering process for residents who seek those opportunities. And we heard that in addition to racial discrimination, certain groups are much more likely to face discrimination in the housing market, such as people with disabilities and people who pay for their rent using a voucher. Next slide, please. We heard about community opposition and how that plays into some of those maps we just showed, about where housing is constructed. That opposition, the community opposition takes really different forms in New York City. You see opposition to new housing, particularly affordable housing, in areas with more wealth and amenities, and that can limit access to neighborhoods for low-income residents and people of color. And at the same time, you see opposition exist in historically under-resourced neighborhoods, where residents fear that new housing development will make rents less affordable or increase their risk of displacement. And so both of those factors are shaping where housing can be built today. Next slide, please. And we heard a lot about a general lack of housing choice, again, discrimination, as I mentioned a few slides ago. But this is not surprising, but few participants in our process felt that they had meaningful housing or neighborhood choice due to high housing costs, and that that is really a fair housing issue as well. And the lack of housing choice impacts the most fundamental details of people's lives, from their decision whether to have a child, to their, to their health outcomes, their sense of safety when they walk around their community. These are not small influences on people's lives. When thinking of, when we asked participants how they make housing choices and what's important to them in the, in what limited choice they do have, we heard that family, community, and sense of belonging play a major role in people's housing choices. And we also heard that government housing programs can offer stability and opportunity, but can also limit neighborhood choice. For many, it is literally winning the lottery to be able to access an affordable home. But, but in winning the lottery and participating in our housing process or NYCHA waiting list, you really limit your ability to choose at a granular level which neighborhood you live in. And, next slide, please. So I'm going to talk now about the goals and strategies. I think we're going to go through this very quickly and focus on some of the land use items, which we think may be of great interest to the commission, but we're happy to take questions more broadly. So first, just, next slide, please. Some, we have six fair housing goals. The first, to combat persistent, complex discrimination with expanded resources and protections, to facilitate equitable housing development in New York City and the region. And we'll go through some of the actions in that today. The third is to preserve affordable housing and prevent the displacement of longstanding residents. Then when we talk about housing choice, the choice to stay in your current community is a, is a major aspect of, of housing choice and of fair housing. Fourth, to enable more effective use of rental assistance benefits, especially in amenity-rich neighborhoods. Going back to what we heard about certain types of New Yorkers, particularly New Yorkers who pay for rent with a voucher, facing particular discrimination in the housing market. Fifth, to create more independent and integrated living options for people with disabilities. There's more in the report, but we heard pretty, pretty alarming things about the experience of people with disabilities in the housing market. And, you know, around, there are about a million New Yorkers living with a disability, and New Yorkers with disabilities have varying needs when it comes to housing. Some may need accessibility for a wheelchair, others may, others may need more minor modifications to account for potentially a sensory disability. And so we heard extensively about the difficulties in finding independent options, and for certain, folks with certain disabilities, the difficulty of transitioning out of institutionalized settings when they may have the capability to live independently, but do not have options for housing because of their disability. And finally, this one is no small thing. The sixth goal is making equitable net investments to address the neighborhood-based legacy of discrimination, segregation, and concentrated poverty, really taking a balanced approach to increase access to opportunity in neighborhoods around the city, particularly in neighborhoods who face this legacy of discrimination, segregation, and concentrated poverty. So, next slide, please. As I said, we released the report as a draft in January 2020. We heard a lot of feedback from the public, and based on that, made some key changes. We also added new information on, on some disparities related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We've added new data about overcrowded housing, access to broadband at home, and living within walking distance to green space. We've included additional information about the history of slavery in New York City, and new indicators and metrics to track fair housing challenges and the city's actions. So making one, we've made each of the actions a little bit more clear for folks that weren't in our process, just to understand what they mean. And we've also added these new key disparities for each goal to connect back to the, the underlying inequalities and inequities described in the, in the body of the report. And each strategy now includes new key metrics to come, to track progress towards implementing that strategy. So the plan, I just went through the six goals. It's organized around six goals. Each of those goals has a few strategies, and under each strategy, some, some concrete actions that is able to pursue to achieve those strategies. We've also included new additional process materials as an appendix, just to kind of show our work more. So a summary and response to comments that we received on the draft plan, similar to a response to comments you might see in the final EIS, and summaries of stakeholder and public feedback that was received in 2018 and 2019. So next slide. I believe this is actually where I'm going to hand it over to Howard Slackin to talk through some of the new actions that we've added in the final plan that are specific to land use.
Thanks, Michael, and good afternoon to Chair Lago and the commissioners. I'm going to speak to this particular wedge of actions from, from Where We Live. I will just note, though, that, you know, as Michael has outlined, the plan itself has a much greater breadth that extends well beyond sort of strictly land use and housing to a wide range of other issues. And I do encourage everyone to absorb some of the other content as well. But I will be focusing, for the purposes of today's discussion, on the elements in the strategy section that pertain more specifically to land use. So starting with this first page, expanding housing options in low-density districts. One of the things that you've seen from the maps that Michael showed is that recent additions to the housing supply have been heavily concentrated in higher-density portions of the city, centrally-located portions of the city, which has many, many benefits, but it also doesn't address the issues in some lower-density districts about limited housing options. This is not just about the number of housing units that are available in these neighborhoods, but it's also about the type of housing units that is often inadequate to meet the, meet the needs of a wide variety of households, including the elderly, including younger people, including people living alone. But that we should be exploring various mechanisms that can further advance the opportunities to create, in appropriate manner, more housing in lower-density neighborhoods. This builds on efforts such as the basement apartment legalization pilot in East New York. Next slide, please. The provision of data to inform decision-making is obviously one of the key functions of the Department of City Planning. And this is really a way that we're expanding on that, to produce a citywide analysis of trends in the additions and subtractions to the housing stock, the availability of affordable housing, and demographics around the city, to help inform the creation of a, of a framework that will frame out the use of all the various tools that the city has to encourage growth and affordability. As part of this, we've really been bolstering our data and databases so that we can produce information about, as I said, addition, not just additions, but also subtractions to the housing stock on a, on a very granular basis, so that we can describe where housing has been added to the stock, where housing is being lost, and what types of housing we have a need for, and where it's, where it's being provided. So this analysis is something we're going to be working on heavily within the next year. Next, please. The advancing of neighborhood zoning proposals to provide for mixed-income housing growth in neighborhoods around the city is obviously always a part of the program. But the focus here is on addressing neighborhoods such as Gowanus and Soho-Noah, where we have the opportunity to provide for mixed-income housing growth in neighborhoods that are high amenity areas, amenity-rich neighborhoods, as the, the plan describes, not just in the neighborhoods that have experienced historical disinvestment or a lack of public investment or lack of housing growth, but also in those neighborhoods where residents can enjoy high access to employment opportunities, educational opportunities, services, and amenities. Next slide, please. Also looking forward at additional ways that we can explore to expand the toolkit that is available for promoting affordable housing. One thing that the commission will recall, we did in zoning for quality and affordability, was to provide more uniform structure for increased FAR for affordable senior housing. This recommendation, this strategy here is, calls for us to look at expanding that kind of approach to address other housing needs. Obviously, from a fair housing perspective, we have populations with disabilities and other special needs, but we also have a wide range of households, individuals, families, that are in need of affordable housing. And this initiative has us looking at ways that we can address wider categories of housing where additional floor area would make it possible to meet those housing needs on individual sites. Next slide, please. As the commission has seen in some of the work that City Planning's Regional Planning Division has done to document regional patterns in housing, employment, and the economy, affordable housing and housing supply is not just a city issue, it's a regional issue. It is one where the city has historically played an outsized role in providing affordable housing for residents of the region. And, you know, the suburbs have seen less housing growth in recent years overall, and, and in particular, much less new affordable housing creation. There was actually a, a report that was just recently released by the Furman Center that highlighted not just the sort of discrepancies we knew about in terms of production, in that, you know, the, the New Jersey suburbs have produced a significant amount of new housing, but the suburbs outside of New York City, in New York State, have not. This Furman Center report actually documented that, you know, New York State has been, has, has really lagged peer states, high-cost states and high-cost regions, in establishing regulations that promote housing development and the acceptance of new housing in communities that resisted through mechanisms such as exclusionary zoning. So the city certainly supports efforts to to achieve state action that will get communities throughout the state to accept a share of new housing and affordable and mixed-income housing as part of their future growth. Next slide. This one I'm actually presenting, but it's really an HPD item, and I'll do my best to describe what HPD is going to be doing here. But this is really about bringing all the new and improved data that's available to bear on HPD's own resource allocations to support housing affordability through capital funding and the allocation, the distribution of Section 8 vouchers, project-based Section 8 vouchers. The idea here is to take a more proactive approach to identifying target areas for achieving affordability to, you know, to, in the, striking the balance that needs to be struck between maximizing total housing and affordable housing production and achieving geographic distribution of affordable housing throughout the city and, of course, meeting special needs of the, for housing at all incomes as well. But this process is one where HPD is going to take a lot of the data that's been launched by the Where We Live Plan and using it to inform its own capital and voucher allocations. Next slide. And finally, this is one that will be of significance and interest, I'm sure, to the commission, which is one of the ways that the plan envisions making data and information available on race and social equity perspectives within decision-making processes is to incorporate, we're working on a standardized approach to incorporating an disclosure of area demographics for projects that are going through the land use review process so that this information is available, easily available to decision-makers. And we're providing additional transparency into what actions are being considered in areas with which racial characteristics. So the idea is that we will be working on standards for applicants to provide this information in the future as land use actions enter the process. And so that completes the list of new actions in the plan. And now, Michael and I would be happy to answer questions that the commission may have.
Thank you both, Michael and Howard, for the thorough presentation. I also want to note that we should not take for granted that the city is doing this. We stand out among municipalities for continuing our commitment to affirmatively furthering fair housing, even after the federal requirement was repealed. And so I applaud HPD for realizing the importance of the work with or without a federal mandate. Commissioner Deloos, I see you have your hand raised.
Sure, that was actually one of the things I was going to say, that I think the administration needs to be commended for doing this. Because after the Trump administration withdrew the requirement, municipalities were off the hook in doing this. So, one of my questions was, so now that you sent it to HUD, I mean, I guess, what's their obligation to review it, at least for the next, you know, four to six weeks?
I wouldn't hold my breath on the next four to six weeks.
I guess, what was the intention when it was sent, I guess, is my question, and I have some other points.
Yeah, I mean, the intention is for the city to continue to fulfill our underlying mandate to formally further fair housing. And so research from the report is being incorporated and has been incorporated into the city's con plan and the annual updates to the con plan. And so, you know, our intention is to make this a regular part of our reporting to HUD based on the obligations of the Fair Housing Act, regardless of the AFFH rule.
Gotcha, okay. Well, so the questions I have, and, you know, first off, I just want to say, I think it was a tremendous effort. It was probably one of the most inclusive publicly-run processes that I have ever seen the city do. And, you know, I think the city really should be commended for that. You know, I certainly, I personally participated in a number of those stakeholder group meetings. And, you know, and the committee helped facilitate a number of the community conversations. And I think the report really does reflect a lot of the nuances of those conversations. I mean, you know, obviously, the individual pain that people expressed, like translating that into like policy recommendations. I think there's obviously, you know, as the review of trends continues, I think we're going to get closer and closer to, like, acknowledging that the level of personal impact that this has on people's lives as we make progress. I guess my, you know, it's interesting, in the past few years, right? Minneapolis announced that they were eliminating single-family zoning. And I'm just, you know, so one question is, you know, we didn't take that tact in terms of the recommendation, right? The tact was more about incentivizing increased development in low-density districts. And I'm just wondering, like, if you could talk through, like, the thinking behind incentive versus elimination, and that would be one. And then the other is, you know, Howard, you talked about, you know, integrating the race and social equity perspectives in all decision-making, which I think is absolutely critical. And, you know, something that we're starting to see, obviously, with the reports that the commission is receiving, you know, in terms of like, this is the AMI level currently in this district, that kind of a thing. But we're not necessarily getting the, you know, the racial breakdown specific to that district. So that would be important. And I'm wondering, like, how quickly do we think we're going to see that change, is one question? And then, what, how does this interact with the pending bill that public advocate Jomani Williams has around racial impact study bill? And so, so those are mine. And then, how does this interact with SEAKER?
So that I will, if I miss elements of that series of questions, please remind me. I'll try to get to them all. Starting with, I appreciate that. The lower density, with respect to lower-density districts, the approach that we're taking, we've certainly been paying attention to what cities and states around the country have been doing on the subject. And, you know, it's really about what is going to address the conditions that exist here and the needs that, you know, and the opportunities that exist here. We have, actually, as compared to other cities, much, much less single-family zoning from a sort of strict standpoint, as are R1 and R2 districts in New York City. They exist, and it's not that they don't exist, but they're actually a much, much smaller share of the city than they are in anywhere else that you're going to go in the country, really. The, well, at least until recently, I should say. The, the approach, though, is that even in districts that are nominally zoned from more than single-family homes, sometimes the effect of the controls that are in place, whether they are density, unit-density-based controls or parking requirements or curb cut limitations, or the very, the full suite of historic districts, which are not strictly land use controls. But yes, you know, the effect of all of those regulations together may result in less than, may result in something that's resulting in single-family zoning. And so what we really need to do on this subject is unpack the various mechanisms, the various housing types that exist, and look at where there are reasonable opportunities to allow more and what housing types would be appropriate and sort of how an additional unit might be possible, sort of envisioned by the zoning, but not actually achievable because of certain limitations of the zoning. So it's a broader view than just sort of flicking a switch and saying, no, single-family zoning. I will say that when you look at other cities and what they've done in the name of eliminating single-family zoning, it's varied widely. Some of them have said, we'll eliminate the unit density requirement, but we won't change the total amount of house you can build. So you can build, you know, the same-sized building, but put more units in it. And some of them have said, we're going to actually allow apartment buildings at modest scales and, you know, duplexes, triplexes. So every community that does this has to really look at how it lands in their neighborhoods. And the idea is to look at the structure of New York City zoning, which has a hierarchy of zoning districts of R1 through R10, and to look at that whole half that's below, you know, that's sort of R5 and below, and look at what opportunities might exist in there. The second part of your question is about disclosure, land use, sort of the demographic disclosure provisions that we're talking about. You know, what we're working through here is what we can standardize and at what level of geography, as you know from hearing the department staff from time to time talk about the balance between geographic specificity and reliability of the data that we can get from the American Community Survey, which is a sample-based data source. And so the finer geography we try to target, the less information we'll be able to really derive. So we're going to have to look at the right balance for the characteristics that we're trying to pull. And this may be something that we have to adjust over time because, you know, at some point in the not-too-distant future, we will have enumeration data from the 2020 census. And obviously, we all hope that we are happy with the data that comes out of that, the quality of the data that comes out of it, but it will be the only enumeration data that we get. And so it should, it may be a better source at small geographies for race, for racial characteristics, for instance, race and Hispanic origin. So we're going to work to operationalize all of that and incorporate that into the process. We're looking at doing that, I don't have a specific timeline, but it's not a long-term project in order to do that. We just have to square the data sources and analysis and then update our standards for applications.
And how do you think that that process, like, what's the relationship between that process and the city's decision on that and the pending legislation from public advocate Williams?
Sure. Now, listen, I want to draw, I think I can draw a distinction here between disclosure of data and predictive analysis. And I think that the latter is something that we don't have a basis that we're aware of. It may be sufficient, you know, it may be, we may be able to get a long way with disclosure of existing characteristics. And I don't know that a standardized application requirement is going to be all the information that's needed in every instance, but that it's the basis for a sort of a common ground for discussion on all projects and applications. To take that to something where we're able to ascertain the future effects of changes on neighborhood demographics, I think is taking it beyond something that we have any methodology or sort of scientific basis to do. And so I think that, to the extent that people are aspiring to those things, I think it's a different set of questions and not one that we can answer this.
To the extent that you look at the history, though, of what's happened, it's possible to figure out the methodology on that.
That is actually an interesting question, and I think that whether there are, on questions of demographic change in neighborhoods, I think that it's very difficult to even retroactively sort of predict them, to describe what's happened in the past, to help us better assess what the possibilities are for the future, something that we can continue to try to do. But I think that there are a lot of demographic changes occur for a lot of different reasons, and a lot of them are very difficult to predict. For instance, just as, you know, Michael was going through the presentation on the geography of race within the city and all the changes that have happened just since 1990. One of the other things that's happened since 1990, or actually, if you went back a decade, you'd see it even more, is just the overall racial composition of the city has changed dramatically. And that went from being a majority white population to less than 40% white, non-Hispanic during that period of time. And so that's why you see in most neighborhoods, the sort of declining share of population that is white, non-Hispanic, because that's what was happening to the city this whole time. What happens in immigration, what happens, you know, what happens to federal immigration policy, which is something we certainly have our eyes closely on right now. All are going to have significant effects on what happens in neighborhoods. And I think our goal here is to be transparent, to disclose, but to, you know, not to, to limit what we describe to what it is that we can back up with some sort of methodology and continue to work with researchers and others who are continuing to describe demographic change in neighborhoods and how it relates to other factors and continue to work on that.
Can I just follow up on that, so, if I can? I think that point's very important, and it may take the same level of input from researchers and academics to help with that. Because I just think, I think that the public will not be satisfied if all it is is disclosure and not thinking, like, how is it that we ensure that our policy actually helps us achieve the goals we've outlined, right? And so, yeah, let's not forget that second piece because it's critically important, and I think there's a lot of academic research that helps with this.
Appreciate it, I'll just, go ahead, sorry, pardon me.
Note on that, equally, we certainly feel as a department that it's important to take the statistically reliable data that we do have now and to bring that forward because that information that we have is powerful and should be shared upfront with communities.
My final question was just about SEAKER. If there's any immediate thoughts about how any of this impacts SEAKER?
I would just say that, to the extent that there is descriptive information that is relevant to SEAKER, then that obviously can be incorporated that way. To the extent that it is about predicting the effects of the proposed action, I think that that's something that goes beyond, again, anything we have a methodology to describe, but we can describe existing conditions in a wholesome way.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. I think a lot of my questions were addressed by Commissioner Deloos's questions, particularly around the assessment of racial impact, which is something I think we've heard a lot about. I remember when I was going before the council for my reappointment, there were a lot of questions about racial impact being made a part of the EIS assessment, EAS, and possibly EIS assessment. So I'd be interested in how that whole analysis progresses. I don't think it's an easy set of solutions necessarily. And just musings at this point, since it's, you know, we're not there yet. But on the question of eliminating single-family zoning, you know, I could imagine lots of opposition coming from places like Southeast Queens and Northeast Bronx, where there are predominantly minority populations and homeowners who might not readily approve such a, or welcome such a proposed change. But, you know, we'll see how this, this whole policy analysis evolves. And also, as what, you know, as was observed earlier, with a new HUD coming in, hopefully, there'll be a more supportive environment for the work that we've got to do here. Thank you.
Commissioner, please.
Hi, thank you for that fabulous presentation, and it brought up quite a bit for me, and I appreciated the conversation that you just had with Commissioner Deloos. You know, one question I have particularly around the desire to see more development in low-density districts, I think that is a principle. I have a question about, you know, one, one challenge or one issue I have always had with the affordable housing industry, and it's not, it's not because of the industry, but just because of how expensive it is to develop in high-income places, is that there's often a correlation of new constructing, construction to existing low-income neighborhoods, because that's where you can afford to build. And so, one principle that I think gets lost is our desire, as a city, to support mixed-income neighborhoods. And, you know, I'm familiar with the research done at Harvard, the Moving to Opportunity Study, which sort of demonstrated the neighborhood effect on outcomes of children, on their health, on their education, on their incomes over time, because they are in neighborhoods that are mixed income. Others might have a different perspective on that research, but that's sort of what I take away from it. So when I hear the desire to see more affordable housing in low-density neighborhoods, I think there's a missing opportunity here to say that, you know, and I'm curious what the, what the position is, what DCP's position is. You know, are we also saying that we want to encourage and support mixed-income neighborhoods so that we discourage the sort of the location of affordable housing almost exclusively, although not so, some of your maps suggest that there's some diversity in that? But that new construction in particular is going towards lower-income neighborhoods?
Thanks, Commissioner. Thanks, Commissioner Ortiz, for the question. I think when it comes to housing, opportunities for housing in low density districts, I want to, you know, sort of be clear how sort of, how, what the breadth of this might be. It's about the, the types of housing units that are available and the, the ways to make a broader range of kinds of housing available. So there's a lot of, I mean, one of the things that's present in the national discourse around this right now is talk of missing middle housing, which is, you know, relatively low cost construction or modifications to buildings to provide units that aren't necessarily subsidized affordable housing, but are low cost and can be rented or, you know, are available at relatively low rents or prices. And there may be opportunities to look at, you know, for instance, small apartments that don't exist in neighborhoods that are full of primarily larger houses. And, you know, just that in and of itself is a low cost housing option that wouldn't be available. And it helps create a, not just a mixed income neighborhood, but also a sort of generationally mixed neighborhood, a neighborhoods that can accommodate different populations with different household structures and demographic backgrounds as well. And so I think this is something that we're trying to construe broadly right now. This isn't sort of built around a specific proposal so much as out of a recognition that in recent years, we have successfully produced a lot of housing in certain parts of the city. But that in other parts of the city, we actually have either declining quantities of housing or actually just declining population because household size may be creeping down in certain neighborhoods. And so you have the same housing stock from decades ago that's serving fewer people over time and not necessarily some of the households that might be seeking housing in those neighborhoods today.
And I, if I might add, I think Howard spoke a lot about the strategies in the plan focused around low density districts. But within our, our second goal of facilitating more equitable housing development, there are a range of strategies to promote a greater diversity, to promote the creation and preservation of affordable housing in a greater diversity of neighborhoods than we currently do. And so from new sort of tools for our staff to analyze when we're making choices about which projects should move forward and at which income levels, projects in different neighborhoods should serve, to some of the zoning strategies that Howard outlined, a sort of a suite of programs that would expand the number of neighborhoods, the low income residents, residents who pay rent with a voucher, or New York with disabilities have access to, really focusing on those, those neighborhoods you have the least housing choice and expanding those housing choices to a greater diversity of neighborhoods, including low density districts, but also, you know, high density districts in, in Manhattan or sort of some of the middle density areas of Brooklyn where we were not able to create a lot of affordable housing, but, but not necessarily for a lack of density.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, following up on that, you know, one of the other themes that we hear in the discussions that we get into about affordable housing, and Michael, you had a couple, the APD report has a couple of lines about this, that for many equity, equity matters more than integration and that family, community and a sense of belonging influence housing choice. And it's also related to the, you know, the phenomenon that Commissioner Ortiz alluded to, which is that we've seen a high rate of, you know, disproportionately high rate of production of affordable housing in low income neighborhoods because that's where the developers can afford to build. All of these things work to compound or to concentrate certain income levels. And I think that this whole fair housing discussion is aimed at getting away from that. But, you know, people want to live where their people are. We hear this also in the discussions about community preference and how community, the community preference that's currently a part of our housing lottery system is at odds with the desire to provide fair housing opportunities. But when we go out to talk to neighborhoods about a new project, they're often willing to accept the new project on the premise that it will serve that neighborhood. And the folks who live in that neighborhood have a priority in getting into the new project. So we've, we've got competing goals that are, you know, in tension with each other. And I wonder if there's more that you could say about your thinking on, you know, the, the draw that, that communities have on the folks who are living there and want to stay there. People want, you know, kids who grew up in a neighborhood want to be able to stay in that neighborhood.
Absolutely. I certainly, you've touched on a very rich area of discussion. So certainly I could say more and I will say some more now, but it's one of those things where we could spend the next, you know, few years of our lives discussing.
Right, right. Yeah.
And so I just, I could draw just a couple distinctions, I think, to further kind of illuminate the discussion and that, one, I want to draw a distinction between households exercising their choice about what's best for their family and is, is being, is it best for their family to be close to their aunt and uncle? Where they can have that childcare support? Or is it best for their family to move to a different neighborhood where they really like the park? Because their kid's a runner, you know, whatever it may be. And there's a complicated set of choices. So I think that's one, that's one set of things. I think residents discussing potential development in their neighborhood and who that's for and who's going to live next door from them is a different matter than, than people's housing choices. And we should try to discuss them a little bit separately. And Commissioner Ortiz mentioned, you know, the sort of seminal moving to opportunity work and that research. And I think a lot of folks, including our current HUD secretary, when they talk about it from later, further in current housing, they talk about that it's social engineering, that it's policymakers like us who are saying, we're going to move these sets of people to this neighborhood and by moving them, their life is going to be better. And I would say that the approach that we've attempted to take in this plan is not that. And it's really focused on that first set of things that I talked about, those families' housing choices and ensuring that people really have that choice where they don't have it now, to make the decisions that are best for their family. And that might be staying in an ethnic enclave where they, their children can be raised within a culture that they feel is their culture. That might mean moving to a new neighborhood where they really love the elementary school or they love being close to the beach or any number of issues. And so we really focused on that choice and trying to expand choice in a city where we don't currently have as much choice. And we hope that households will choose, make the choices that best serve them on the opportunities that they want. And I don't know if that was helpful or.
No, it's true. No, obviously it's important to, I mean, this is all about expanding choice, but we're in the business, we at the planning commissioner are in the business of creating landing places for those choices to be made. And.
Commissioner, I just add, sorry, I would just add to Michael's response, Michael's excellent response, that, you know, when you think about moving to opportunity, the commission, we, City Planning HPD, we all have to focus on both the neighborhood that people can move to, but also the neighborhood that they're leaving behind, because that's still a neighborhood that we have to plan for, we have to care for, we have to make a neighborhood with better opportunities. So we have to do both of these things. It's not that there's some sort of solution that involves all of New York City moving to some other place and finding opportunity. This is where the opportunity is, is going to be. It's going to be in all of our neighborhoods. So I think, I, I think that I, one of the things I appreciate about the plan, the way HPD assembled it is that it seeks to do both of those things. We need to make investments in neighborhoods that have the legacy of redlining and lack and disinvestment in them. But we also have to make it possible to expand the realm of choices for households of lower incomes in all of the city's neighborhoods.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes, thank you very much for that presentation. It was very helpful. Some of the questions I had, Commissioner De Laus had asked, and I just have a couple of follow up questions with regards to the data. Is there a mechanism in place to say how many affordable units were created in each community? Because I'm looking at the Housing New York map online right now, and I'm astounded by the number of development dots that I see primarily a lot of development in Brooklyn, not as much as in Queens as I thought there would be. And I'm trying to decipher how many affordable units were created by borough. And I have no idea how to find that information. And I guess a follow up question to that would be, can we incorporate that information onto the City Planning ZOLO website? Because I go to the ZOLO website and I see we have MIH areas. I see other, other information that we can possibly get, but I don't see a way to say, okay, let's click on the link for New York City Housing and it takes us into the housing, you know. So I guess I'm just trying to get more information on the stats on this. Is there a way that can be incorporated?
Sure, I can answer the first part and I can leave questions about ZOLO to Howard. But just on the first part, we, we do publish much more nuanced data. We have an open data portal on our website. I believe we also include those statistics in the mayor's management report and pretty regularly update on housing year progress. All, all of that's available on our website, but I'm also happy to follow up and send some links, including just a summary by Borough as the Commissioner requested.
And in addition to that, the initiative that I highlighted, I think, if I remember my numbers correctly, it's 2.1.2. For us to produce a sort of citywide roll up of additions and subtractions to the housing stock, we're also looking to join that to HPD's information about affordable housing. You know, there's all of the housing and then there's the HPD specific affordable housing. And to put that all in context on a, you know, in the same sort of geographically granular way that Michael just described.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marin.
There you go. To mute it, mute it to different places. Sorry about that. Thank you. So first of all, thank you all for the presentation. Very enlightening and most of the comments that I wanted to make have been addressed. But I do want to emphasize something that I am very concerned about. And that is when we talk about, you know, the redlining and intentional redlining, I, I'm wondering how much unintentional redlining we do by, by, by putting in efforts, for example, like mandatory inclusionary housing in the Jerome Edward L. Grant corridor. And when we went to the hearing at the Borough President's office, the one thing that you did hear was from that young professional who wanted to stay in the community for whatever reason, be it school, be it the family, and was now making $200,000 a year, he was outpriced from any, any of the effort of these developments ever being built in the community. So the intention of MIH in that community was, was to do just that. And I know that HPD has, in some projects up there, made them 100% affordable. I know that 70% or the 75% is only for a 30 year or 40 year regulatory period and then balance is, is, is permanently affordable. But I'm wondering that, you know, how much damage are we doing by not intentionally making sure that those buildings are not 100% affordable? And we have conglomerates of affordable housing buildings in the upper parts of, of the Bronx, where we look at the edge of the Bronx over by, you know, the Harlem River, where you have all the market rate development that's taking place, and are we again redlining ourselves? I just want, I caution against that. And the reason why is because in conversations with a congressman who actually was one of the proponents for building base section eight, admitted that in the past, in, in an effort to, to save communities, these decisions were made without thinking about the outcomes and as a result, created pockets of poverty in the Bronx versus a walking voucher where people have the opportunity to choose where they live. So I, I just want to make sure that we, we think about these things as we move forward. When we do decide that we're going to have some mixed income communities and then we change because we know that there's a need for more affordable housing. And again, folks do want to be close to folks that they're familiar with. You know, the upper Bronx neighborhood, the West Indian Jamaican community over by White Plains Road. It's just beautiful. It's the Italian community and Arthur Avenue, the African community in West Bronx. I mean, we are integrated. We don't necessarily are integrated by each neighborhood, but as a borough, we are. And we appreciate those differences that people have. And again, I just, I caution against creating these topics once again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Your, your, the issues that you raise, while different from the ones that Commissioner Levin raised, both just point out the enormity of the challenge and that Land use alone isn't the answer. And how much I think it's going to be essential to have a partner in Washington that is willing to have these, these difficult conversations and strike these, these tough balances. I don't see any other, oh, Commissioner De Laus, you'd like to speak again?
Well, just briefly, I, I mean, I definitely think the, the entire where we live conversation, I think reframes a lot of policies and actions for the city moving forward. And I think it's an important framework for conversations at, really at every community level about like, you know, what is the city that we want to see and what is our shared responsibility to realizing that vision? And I think oftentimes when we're in these conversations, either about an individual project or about a neighborhood rezoning, what's absent is like, either how that project or that neighborhood rezoning contributes to the city's overall goals. And this report, I think, actually allows the city to reference a report and that like kind of says, like, this is like, this is how far off we are from our goals and we need to like intentionally do things differently. And so I, you know, I would just hope that the department and, and of course HPD as, you know, as we're having conversations with individual developers or individual community boards, like I could see, like, are you rolling this out to community boards to train them on this, to help them unpack this data? Like, that would be really important. Like, what kind of education's happening with council members and, you know, all the candidates for council that are coming up? Like, because otherwise, the framing of the dialogue is very different. And like, this is very important to help people frame things differently. And it's about to get kind of ugly, I think, during some upcoming races. And this, this report will help, I think, maybe shift some thinking and dialogue.
I can say that I know I speak for HPD and the department. We didn't put this much work into something that we weren't required to do just to have to be a report. It is something that we, the department, I thank HPD for the extent to which they invited us in to shape the report. And it's also why we so promptly scheduled a briefing with you, the commissioners. I, I am very heartened by the fact that there is this level of interest in the report that we've spent an hour discussing it and could easily spend another. But you, you are so right. It's not just the report, it's shaping, it's informed by what you said, this broadly participatory series of discussions, but it is part of reshaping about how we think about our mandates going forward. And seeing no other hands, I will again, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Howard, for the presentation. And obviously, either of them would be pleased to take any follow up questions that you would want to follow, have follow up discussions with any of the commissioners.
Thank you.
So back to you.
Thank you.
So we'll begin our regular agenda for Monday, November 30th, 2020, noting that a quorum is present. So the first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map amendment and modifications of a restrictive declaration in Brooklyn Community District 13. Our presenter is Colin Lee.
Good afternoon, everyone. All right, next slide. And this is an application by McDonald's Corporation to request a zoning map amendment from an R6 C12 zoning district to an R6 C24 overlay within the Special Ocean Parkway District and a modification to the restrictive declaration to facilitate the legalization of the, of an accessory drive through facility at an existing eating and drinking establishment, McDonald's at 606 Neptune Avenue. Next slide. The project area is located within the West Brighton neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 13. Next slide. The development site is located 150 feet west of West Sixth Street, between Neptune Avenue to the north and Sheep's Head Bay Road to the south. St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church is located on the western side of the same block as the development site. The surrounding area is well served by public transportation. 400 feet to the north is Neptune Avenue F subway station. And the B68 and B36 buses are along Neptune Avenue. The development site is a use group six eating and drinking establishment, McDonald's, with a accessory drive through facility, 36 parking spaces and indoor and outdoor dining areas. The McDonald's on the development site has been open since the mid 1970s and the accessory drive through has been on the site since 1982. Next slide. The area map here displays a mix of land uses such as residential, commercial, parking facilities and transportation utility. The development site is an R6 C12 zoning district within the Special Ocean Parkway District. The development site is in an R6 C12 zoning district within the Special Ocean Parkway District. And this area is also within the 1% chance flood zone. Next slide. Use Group Six allows eating and drinking establishments with accessory drive-through facilities as of right in most commercial districts, with the exception of C1 and C5 districts. Pursuant to 73243 of the zoning resolution, the Board of Standard Appeals may permit a special permit for an eating and drinking establishment to operate their accessory drive-through facility within a C11, C12, and C13 districts, except in special purpose districts. The accessory drive-through facility existing on the development site today is not eligible for BSA special permits and cannot operate as of right within the existing C12 commercial overlay. Next slide. In the early 1960s, the developer at the time proposed a redevelopment plan of almost 40 acres within the surrounding area to be redeveloped for mixed housing and retail. Shortly after, in 1962, the same plan was amended to include the development site that we're speaking on today, which was planned for an additional accessory parking for the proposed nearby shopping center. Between 1962 and 1975, the development site was never improved by the developer at the time, who claimed they didn't need the additional parking space. The development site remained vacant and inundated by people using it as a dumping site for garbage. The community was concerned as years went by and the promise of redevelopment was never, had never occurred. In 1975, the developer at the time rezoned the development site from an R6 to an R6 C12 to allow commercial use and the construction of an eating and drinking establishment. Due to the history of the site being underdeveloped, the community's concern and in conjunction with the rezoning, a restrictive declaration was established between an affiliate of the McDonald's Corporation and the developer at the time. They entered into the restrictive declaration that restricted the manner in which the development site may be developed, maintained, and operated. They wanted to establish trust with the community that the site will be developed and maintained and provide safety and security of the area, along with a modern, well-lit fast food outlet. In addition, in addition, any changes to the site plan requires a minor modification to the declaration and may be approved administratively by the City Planning Commission. The CPC at the time approved the rezoning and the declaration with a vote of four in favor and three opposing. In 1977, the Special Ocean Parkway District was created over the surrounding area and the development site at that time, which should have precluded the site from future BSA special permits. Next slide. And although in the past applicants were ineligible for BSA special permits, they received the first one in 1982. The site plan was reconfigured to include the newly added accessory drive-through facility, which was approved by the BSA and the CPC. And the restrictive declaration was amended at that time. This occurred again also in 1986. Both amendments included updates to the site plan, which included the configuration of the accessory drive-through and the amount of parking. The inclusion of the 1977 Special Purpose District may have been overlooked in the 1980s when the BSA was issuing the McDonald's special permits on the site. And it was actually ineligible for receiving those special permits. This assumption led to more special permits issued in 1987 and 1994. Next slide. In 2002, the final BSA special permit was issued and it included a new site plan that was approved by the BSA with a reconfiguration of the drive-through facility and an increase in the number of parking spaces from 29 to 36. The restrictive declaration was never amended to reflect the 2002 BSA-approved site plan. Also in 2015, after attempting to renew a special permit with the BSA for the drive-through, the applicant received a letter from the BSA refusing their application and explained that they were not eligible for the special permit. Next slide. And here are some photos. On the left is a view west along West Sixth Street of the McDonald's in the outdoor seating area. And on the right is a view at the intersection of Neptune and West Sixth Street. Next slide. And on the left is a view north at Sheep's Head Bay Road of the McDonald's parking lot and drive-through. And on the right is a view north of the McDonald's drive-through from the sidewalk of West Sixth Street. Next slide. To facilitate the use of the accessory drive-through facility, the applicants are requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area with a C24 commercial overlay. C24 commercial overlays permit commercial use at a maximum FAR of two in the R6 district and one parking space for every 1,000 square foot of floor area. The C24 commercial overlay does not require a BSA special permit to allow the drive-through as an accessory used to the McDonald's. Next slide. Additionally, to amend the restrictive declaration with the 2002 changes to the site plan would require a minor modification and CPC approval. Next slide. In order to, and also in order to facilitate the drive-through and amend the restrictive declaration, the applicant is requesting to rezone and to modify the declaration. Thank you.
So a simple action, but an incredibly complicated history. And Ryan, would you want to share your role in this?
Oh, I mean, I was just the one who was at the BSA who read the zoning and applied the zoning. That's, that's all I did. And I wrote the letter.
And so Commissioner Dweck.
Must clarify, they were always in the right when they were using it. It's just that the application of the law was mishandled. Is that correct? They didn't?
I mean, that's my impression is that they, they were sort of unaware. They were issued a special permit in the 80s and had no reason to question it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Other questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. I got to say, this is, you know, this is the sort of situation that gives our work a very bad name. It's like, you know, the thing is there. We're going to hear from the community how well it's working operationally. And, you know, this is like something out of Dickens that we've got all of this stuff going back and forth. But Ryan, when they came to BSA in 2015, they were wanting to renew it. How, how did this come to light at the current, you know, at this current moment? Were they trying to refinance or sell? Or it's typically one of those that brings this forward.
Well, their, their special permit had lapsed at the BSA. They were, they were trying to be good actors and renew their special permit. The special permit expires, I think it's every five years.
Yes.
And, and so they had, it had already expired by then. I think they had issued in 2002. So they were a little lapsed, but they came in, they filed for it. They didn't indicate that there was any sort of, you know, pressure to, you know, on them to do that. They just were trying to stay up to date.
Yeah. All right. So I do have a question about the sort of the current configuration, the current situation on the ground. And I think it'll be interesting to hear from the community board if there are operational aspects of this McDonald's that need to be attended to. That's one of the benefits of public processes, it can draw those issues out. But I'm struck by looking at the aerial views that there is that sort of dirt path, human-made path across the lawn part of it with the tables that is reflected in the proposed site plan. It doesn't seem like that's the best urban design solution to that condition. And I also went back and read the restrictive declarations, which I have to say had a little bit of a surprise in it when you look at the declaration from 1975 and who signed it. It's a signature that we have all now become nationally familiar with, as this was a development by the Trump Organization.
Was it done in black Sharpie?
It looks like black Sharpie, but we've been having a debate in my household about whether the Sharpie has gotten bigger and fatter. But it's unmistakably the same signature. Anyway, the restrictive declaration had some requirements with respect to street trees. There's supposed to be landscaping along the fencing that separates the McDonald's from the church so that the, you know, there would not be visibility between the two. It looks like there's just now orange cyclone fencing there. Are there any site improvements that city planning has considered there? Is that something we ought to be pushing on? I mean, I assume those features in the restrictive declaration continue to be in effect, even though we're modifying the restrictive declaration. But we ought to make this place look as nice as it can be or should be at this neighborhood location.
As I can, I can speak to that. Yes, well, we did look into that when updating the restrictive deck. Our technical revision division actually looked into like whether, were the requirements. And we actually reached out to the applicant reps to let them know that these are the requirements. And we made sure that they made, made sure to update their site plan as the existing conditions today is.
Okay, but you didn't think about requiring them to sort of refresh any of the landscaping?
I think, Commissioner, that the restrictive deck, as you know, came from the 1970s. It's the kind of declaration that we no longer use
Right.
as of our rezonings. And so I think that as we are rezoning, we no longer impose these. We have a couple of legacy ones. We recently had to make a change of one of those old-style restrictive declarations in the Meatpacking District. But it is not something that we believe is within our purview. It's a tool that was used in the past, but hasn't been in I don't know how many decades.
Well, maybe we can continue that based on, continue this conversation based on what we hear from the community. Maybe it's not an issue.
An interesting term that I learned from the folks at the department is those paths where people show how they use a site are called desire lines.
Right. Right. Yeah, I've got a few favorite ones in Central Park. But still, sometimes those desire lines get turned into something a little bit nicer.
Other questions? Okay, then this application is certified and will make its way to the community board.
Thanks.
On.
Ryan, before you continue, are we having a problem with production? Am I the only one? When every other speaker speaks, am I the only one on screen or?
No, you, you're, it's swapping between.
Okay.
For me.
I'm not, okay, great.
There's, there's ways to, we can have Saki talk to you about the settings on Zoom. There's.
No problem. Yeah, thank you.
So the second item on the agenda is a non-ular post-referral review of a minor modification to a previously approved special permit and a restrictive declaration in Brooklyn Community District 1. Our presenter is Katie for EMEO.
Hi there. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a post-referral update on an application for Meyer modification of part of the Domino Sugar Large-Scale General Development in Brooklyn. Next slide, please. Slide two. Thank you. The proposed action would modify a special permit for height and setback that was previously approved in 2014. It would facilitate a change to the design of the glazed roof addition of the Domino Sugar Refinery, which is a designated New York City landmark. The Landmarks Preservation Commission has reviewed the new design that's before you today and issued a certificate of appropriateness. Next slide, please. The Domino Large-Scale General Development is an approved phased proposal of five buildings and waterfront open space along the East River, just north of the Williamsburg Bridge. The 11-acre site includes three zoning lots. And here you see the refinery building on Lot 2, which is the subject of this Meyer modification outlined in blue. The actions approved for this area in 2014 allow for development of approximately 2.9 million square feet of floor area, including 2,300 homes, 144,000 square feet of community facility, and 589,000 square feet of commercial space. Two buildings have been completed so far. The refinery building, when complete, will be adapted as office space. And the open space that's shown along the waterfront, Domino Park, is also complete and open to the public. Next slide, please. So these two renderings show the changes in plans for the refinery building. What was approved by the CPC in 2014 is on the left and the current proposal is on the right. The glazed roof addition has been amended from bi-level rectangular floors to a barrel-vaulted design. Each of these designs was reviewed and approved by the Landmarks Preservation Commission, which issued a certificate of appropriateness on the barrel-vaulted design in October 2019. We understand from the applicant that the roof plans were changed in part as the result of site investigations that revealed significant structural concerns with the original plan, which would have required joining new floors to the existing historic walls. Next slide, please. So here's a north-facing cross-section of the refinery under the prior-approved envelope on the left and the current proposed envelope on the right. The proposed development has a reduced number of total floors, greater floor-to-floor height, and new space between the accessible floors and the exterior walls. Together, these changes result in a reduced floor area compared to the previously approved design. Also, under the proposed envelope, the maximum height is increased by four feet eight inches to accommodate the slight elevation of the roof within the glass dome shape. Next slide, please. This application for Meyer modification to a special permit was referred out to Brooklyn Community Board 1 on August 31st, 2020, for 16 days. The community board heard this item on October 13th. The board did not issue a comment to the CPC stating that they had reviewed this proposed design change previously, prior to LPC issuing a certificate of appropriateness. And when they opined on the LPC action, the community board's landmarks and land use committee had noted that they preferred the barrel-vaulted design to the earlier glass box shape. And they voted in favor of the change. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Okay, so with that, I will.
I just, can I, I just had one question.
Certainly.
Oh, sorry. It's just that I was just wondering, I mean, mostly with these high-rise buildings, by the time you're finished with the roof, they then add a whole cluttering of mechanical equipment and chillers and so on. And I'm just wondering where all that's going to go with this new rooftop design?
We can go back to slide five, production, if that's helpful. It's my understanding that the, some part of the space under the kind of dome shape will be for elevated mechanical equipment.
Oh, so it's within the dome?
That's my understanding.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay. Unusual. Okay, well, that answers my question. Thank you.
And any other questions? Okay, then what I will do is ask the commission for a, sent by a show of hands by saying "I" in our virtual world, to send a letter to the Department of Buildings because of our determination that it's minor mod. All in favor, say "I." Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. The third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District 12. Our presenter is Karina Liam.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Oh, we're waiting for this to load. Could I ask, was, I didn't see this material, these materials in our briefing packet on the box link? I wonder if it could get loaded in, please, later?
Sure. And double-check on that. Thanks for flagging it.
Like I saw it.
I think I saw it also.
Really?
They were added in later than the other materials?
All right, maybe I just got overeager. I'll go look again. Thank you.
Um. Okay. So as Ryan, as Ryan was saying, this is a uh, application coming back for pre-hearing. Uh, next slide. So this is a private application to rezon an R-five C-two-two area to C-four-four A district and map an MIH area in the southern part of. Community District Twelve in the Borough Park neighborhood of Brooklyn. The actions would facilitate a new sixteen thousand square foot, five-story office building that would house employees of Chartwell Pharmaceuticals, which is a company that's owned by the applicant. Next slide. So I want to provide some context for this application since it's not very common to see multi-story commercial offices outside of central business districts. So in the map on the left, uh, which shows rough locations of office-based jobs. You can see that the Borough Park Neighborhood tabulation area actually um, has a higher concentration of office jobs in the western half of NTA than much of the surrounding area. Additionally, the Borough Park Neighborhood is fairly unique and a lot of residents also actually work in the neighborhood. Uh, so you have thirty, here you have thirty percent of residents uh, walking to work, which is substantially more than the borough average of nine percent. This is also a neighborhood where sales and office jobs are uh, quite common. Next slide. The rezoning area is located on the west side of Sixteenth Avenue between fifty-eighth and fifty-ninth Street. You can see it's around the corner from the fifteen oh one to fifteen fifty-five sixtieth Street rezoning application, which is currently at City Council. The surrounding area is largely comprised of large, of lower-scale buildings that you can see that along Fifteenth Avenue and Sixteenth Avenue, which are both wide streets, there are several five and six-story buildings. Area transit includes the D and the entrants, which are approximately one-half mile away, and the B nine bus, which is about a block away. Next slide. Most of the surrounding area north of Sixtieth Street is zoned R-five or R-six and has residential uses, while the area south of Sixtieth Street is primarily zoned M-one-one. And has a lot of industrial uses along with a mix of commercial, community facility and residential uses. There's an R-six A district that was mapped in twenty thirteen, two blocks south of the project area, R-seven A C-two, that's under. Just northwest of that, on the other side of the railroad. Sixth new is a little bit um, different from the surrounding context. So there is a C-eight-one district mapped across the street from the proposed rezoning area. And along the street, there are commercial uses, both as standalone buildings, mixed use along with community facility, eventual uses. As well as high intensity uses once you get down to the M-one-one area. Um, so I'll show you context looks like uh, from the street level. Next slide. So we'll start with the development site and go south. Block right here, you're looking at is the um, block with the project area on it, the development size, um, point out the red star. Um, across the street in slide one, there's a private girls' school, um, high school, and then uh. Some businesses further down. Next slide. On the next block south, there's a furniture store and medical offices, uh, which you can see in both images. And then in slide, in image four, um, you can see that the next block down has a mixed-use building um, with professional offices uh, or. A professional services on the ground floor and then across the street is a six-story residential building. Next slide. Um, further down, uh, you have a private school that's across the street from restaurant automotive uses and then beyond that. More medical offices and adult daycare. Um. Next slide. I'm just going back to the development site and moving north. This is the first block north of development site, which uh, is much more residential, but you do see in image one that there are some uh, non-residential ground floor uses, including. A restaurant, dry cleaner, and more medical offices. Next slide. Continuing, the next block has uh, multifamily buildings and a large public school, which you can see inside in image three and in image four. On the next block shows the next block where there are some three-story residential buildings. Uh, along with a number of local commercial uses on the ground floors of mixed-use buildings. Next slide. Beyond that, um, one block north, you have more of the same um, commercial corridor feel with local commercial uses on the ground floor. Of mixed-use buildings, um, and then in slide six on the left, that's a large house of worship. Next slide. So currently, the project area is zoned R-five with a seat, a hundred and fifty-foot deep C-two-two overlay. This allows one FAR for commercial uses, uh, two FAR for community facility uses, and up to one point eight FAR for residential uses under optional bulk provisions available in the area. Building height here is limited to forty feet. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to remove the C-two-two overlay and map in one hundred foot deep C-four-four district along uh, Sixteenth Avenue. This district would allow multi-story commercial uses at four FAR. Residential community facility uses would be governed by R-seven A bulk regulations, which would allow four point six FAR for community facility. Or sorry, four point six FAR for residential and four FAR for community facility uses. And then all buildings in this district would be allowed up to seventy-five foot high street walls and overall building height of ninety-five feet. Next slide. The development site uh, shown here in red, it's comprised of three tax locks uh, facing Sixteenth Avenue that are approximately twenty feet wide by sixty-six feet deep. The remaining lots in the rezoning area are not controlled by the applicant. Next slide. The applicants proposing to build a sixty-one foot tall, five-story building that's just under sixteen thousand square feet or four FAR. As mentioned earlier, the applicant's company, Chartwell Pharmaceuticals, would be the sole occupant of the building. Chartwell's main location is up in Rockland County, uh, where the company manufactures drugs and has additional office staff. They also currently have um, some office staff working in various spaces along Sixteenth Avenue. The applicant has told us that the proposed development would consolidate the back office functions of the company and create a walk-to-work opportunity for the many employees that live in Borough Park. And allow for the company to hire additional employees. Next slide. So to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to establish a C-four-four A district. Which would increase the allowed commercial FAR from one to four. Increase community facility FAR from two to four and increase the residential FAR from a maximum of one point eight to four point six. The allowable building height would increase from forty feet to ninety-five feet. Next slide. The applicant is also proposing to map MIH options one and two. Next slide. This application was certified in uh, on February eighteen. Community Board Twelve held their public hearing on November twenty-fourth and recommended disapproving with zero votes in favor of the application, twenty-eight against the application, and one abstention. Um, in their consideration, the community board um, noted that residents on the immediate blocks did not want the commercial office use here. They also cited concerns about parking demand and increased traffic, um, noting that um, there's already an extensive parking needs due to the police station down the street. They also had concerns about um, the impact of the increased vehicle traffic on public safety, given there are a lot of schools in the area. And did not like the lack of outreach from the applicant to the neighboring residents. The Brooklyn Borough President held their hearing on November tenth and also recommended disapproving the application. They didn't offer any formal recommendations, um, but in their consideration noted that the um, Borough President believed that modest height and density. Increase did seem appropriate in this area. And but they felt that the applicant should seek property in existing commercial districts um, or the manufacturing districts. And I'll now take any questions that you have.
Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, then we will see this at a public hearing on Wednesday. Thank you, Karina. Thanks.
The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permit and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Just wait for this pull-up. Great. Uh, if you can progress to the next slide, please. So this is a private application by RXR forty-two eleven ninth Holdings LLC, also known as RXR. Seeking approval of an industrial business incentive area or IBIA special permit and related text amendment to facilitate development. Of a twenty-one-story mixed-use building, including office, retail, and industrial space, quiet industrial space in the Long Island City neighborhood of Queens Community District Two. Next slide, please. RXR has experience in the industrial sector, specifically in Long Island City. They have owned and operated the Standard Motors Products Building since two thousand and fourteen, which includes a broad range of tenants, uh, industrial and office tenants. RXR has a demonstrated history working with industrial brokers and looks to expand their industrial portfolio. Next slide, please. November sixteenth, City Planning's Housing Economic Development Division briefed the commission with background on the IBIA program, which allows. Uh, the same FAR allowed today for community facility uses to be used for light, a specific light industrial and commercial uses, and also provide updates. On previously approved IBIA projects, which are currently only allowed within M-one-two districts in the Green Point Williamsburg IBZ, also known as IBIA One. Next slide, please. Uh, over the past several decades, Long Island City has been transitioning from a traditional industrial neighborhood to one of the most diverse economies in the country. The expansion of industrial and commercial development in Long Island City would be consistent with the New York Works Plan. And Long Island City has, was identified as a potential central business district for growing job nearly thirty years ago. The LIC's proximity and transit options linking to places like Cornell Tech, uh, Midtown Manhattan, Hudson Yards make Long Island City very attractive for development. And although the area has seen significant residential development in recent years, uh, there has been substantial progress in bringing a more diverse set of uses, including. Uh, large commercial office buildings, life science-oriented and institutional developments, while while maintaining its industrial character. Uh, since twenty-ten, uh, over ten million square feet of commercial space has been delivered to the market in Long Island City. But the majority of this space is through the conversion of existing buildings. Next slide, please. Project area located forty-two eleven ninth Street, fronts Queens Plaza South between Ninth Street and Tenth Street. Is located in an M-one-four district that allows for a maximum commercial industrial FAR of two point zero and a maximum community facility FAR of six point five. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of mostly industrial and commercial buildings, and the project area is located within a pro- uh, portion of the Long Island City IBZ established in two thousand and six. North of the Queensborough Bridge, within an existing R-six zoning district, are the Queensbridge Houses, the largest public uh, housing facility in North America. Three subway stations beyond the area map boundaries above are within a ten-minute walking distance of the project area, in addition to several bus routes and city bike locations. Next slide, please. The project area is quite terminus with a development site and has a lot area of approximately forty-nine thousand square feet. Next slide. The project area is currently improved with a one-and-a-half-story industrial building occupied by Tiny Machine Corporation, an elevator machining and repair facility with approximately eighteen employees. Tiny Machine Corporation would be a development partner with the applicant, and they plan to voluntarily relocate to a new smaller facility, more efficient building within the city limits. Uh, next slide, please. Just uh, re-familiarize, uh, commissioned with uh, photos of these existing conditions. Uh, photo one on the left, view of Tenth Street facing northeast with the site on the left. Photo two is a view of Queens Plaza South facing northwest from Tenth Street, site at the left. Next slide, please. Photo uh, three is view of Tenth Street facing southwest from Queens Plaza South, site at the right. Photo four is view of the site facing south from the intersection of Queens Plaza South and Ninth Street. Next slide. Uh, photo five, view of Ninth Street facing southwest, Queens Plaza South, and photo six, view of Ninth Street facing northeast, site at the right. Uh, next slide, please. Photo seven, uh, view of the site facing northeast from Ninth Street, and finally, a photo eight, view of Queens Plaza South facing southeast from Ninth Street, site at the right. Uh, next slide, please. In terms of the proposed development, the applicant is proposing a new twenty-one-story mixed-use building containing approximately three hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet. Of commercial and required industrial space, including approximately ninety-eight thousand square feet of permitted uses at a two-point zero FAR. Sixty-four thousand square feet of acquired industrial uses at a one-point-three FAR and a hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet of incentive uses at a three-point-two FAR. The proposed maximum building envelope height would be three hundred and thirty feet, and the proposed maximum bulkhead envelope height would be an additional forty feet. Within that envelope, the applicant proposes a building roof that rises approximately three hundred and twelve feet, and then the bulkhead at three hundred and thirty-two feet. Retail and required industrial uses would be located on the ground floor and additional required industrial uses on the second and third floors. The upper floors would consist predominantly of office space categorized as both permitted and incentive uses, and possibly an eating and drinking establishment, a permitted use. The first and second floors have floor plates of approximately thirty thousand zoning square feet, and then, and then on the upper floors, floor plates range between thirteen and sixteen thousand square feet. The variety of the, of these four plates are intended to provide maximum flexibility for a broad range of office uses. And although there is no requirement to provide parking, sixty-seven permitted spaces would be provided. Next slide, please. The following floor plans indicate use by color, gray being parking-loading mechanical space, blue representing required industrial space. Yellow representing incentive uses and purple representing permitted uses. Pursuant to the application requirements of the IBIA special permit filed for plans established the location of freight elevators and loading areas. And the location of the floor area dedicated to required industrial uses and incentive uses. Permitted uses include approximately twenty-nine hundred square feet of ground floor retail at the corner of Tenth Street and Queens Plaza South. The first floor would be used primarily for the required industrial space and would contain a main building lobby, access from Tenth Street, and a separate lobby for the industrial tenants on Ninth Street. To enhance pedestrian experience, landscape open space would be located along Tenth Street with a minimum depth of fifteen feet. A five-foot, two-inch sidewalk widening along Queens Plaza South would be provided, satisfying the requirement that adjacent sidewalks be built to a width of fifteen feet. And there are five twelve-foot by thirty-three-foot loading berths on the ground floor with access to dedicated freight elevators for the industrial tenants. Two curb cuts would be at a Ninth Street, uh, one for access, uh, to provide access both the loading berths and one uh, eighteen-foot curb cut for provide access to the parking spaces in the cellar. Uh, locating the curb cuts on uh, Ninth Street is intended to keep, you could actually uh, stay on that uh, previous slide there, Jeff. You had, you had progressed, thank you. Uh, locating the curb cuts uh, on Ninth Street is intended to keep the bulk of the vehicular traffic away from the main pedestrian traffic. Uh, which would be concentrated on Tenth Street and Queens Plaza South, where the retail and main lobby are located. The proposed development will also contain forty-three bicycle parking spaces as required by zoning access from Tenth Street. Next slide. The entire second and third floor would be used for required industrial space. Twenty footsteps uh, floor-to-floor ceiling heights on the first through third floors. Uh, are intended to provide the necessary clearance for special mechanical equipment required by some light manufacturing firms, and the column grid spacing. Uh, are designed to provide the flexibility needed for modern industrial floor plates. The second and third story industrial uses, uh, users would be accessible by dedicated four elevators, uh, freight elevators. And approximately thirteen thousand square foot terrace would be located at the third floor. Next slide, please. Uh, above sections looking east, indicating the first three floors occupied by the required industrial permitted uses, followed by eighteen floors of predominantly office space. The red bull line indicates the maximum building envelope height at three hundred and thirty feet and three hundred and seventy feet for the bulkhead. Next slide, please. Above are the elevations from Ninth Street, Queens Plaza South on the left. Proposed building would rise approximately three hundred and thirty, uh, excuse me, three hundred and twelve feet to the roof and then additional twenty feet to the top of the bulkhead enclosed by screening. Next slide. This is a elevation from Queens Plaza South, looking south, Tenth Street on the left, Ninth Street on the right. Next slide, please. Uh, in order to facilitate this new building, the applicant is requesting an IBIA special permit and a series, excuse me, and a text amendment. Next slide, please. Regarding the text amendment component, several updates to the text were added at the directions to be planning, following lessons learned from previous IBIA projects. And to provide some clarity to the provisions of the text. First, in order to seek the IBIA special permit, the project area needs to be mapped as an IBIA area. The text amendment would make the provisions of ZR section seventy-four ninety-six of the IBIA special permit applicable to M-one-four zoning districts. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, additional updates would apply the underlying height and setback regulations to developments in the M-one-four districts and allow the CPC to modify such regulations, though those are not being sought by the applicant. Uh, the proposed development can be accommodated by the underlying M-one-four bulk regulations and sky exposure plane and does not require the same relief. At City Planning's direction. At City Planning's direction, the minimum required square footage of horizontally contiguous industrial use would be reduced from five thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet within the new I B I A, I B I A, and would not be retroactive to I B I A one, which is in Brooklyn. During the course of research for City Planning's two thousand and eighteen study titled Can Industrial Mixed-Use Buildings Work in New York City? City Planning conducted interviews of industrial developers and property owners, including the Greenpoint Manufacturing Design Center. We consistently heard that the twenty-five hundred square foot size is a useful base module for small industrial makers. This has also been reinforced by conversations within the Long Island City community. And then further, in an effort to clean up the D Z R, additional revisions were made at the direction of city planning, including revisions that align the special permit with, with the standards of other CPC special permits, consolidating two special permits now for the I B A for an F A R increase, along with the parking loading relief, the one I B I A special permit. This would apply only to future I B I A special permits, is not, again, retroactive to the other approved special permits in I B I A one. Next slide, please. And then the other action being sought is the special permit itself being requested to increase the maximum FAR for specific industrial manufacturing and commercial uses. The specific, excuse me, the special permit would increase the total allowable floor area by two hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet, an increase of approximately four-point-five FAR for eligible industrial and commercial uses. The total six-point-five FAR is the same that would, again, be allowed for community facility uses today. In conjunction with the special permit for an increase in FAR, the applicant also requests to modify the loading berth requirements, reducing from five, excuse me, seven to five, and reduce the sided, size of the loading berths from fifty to thirty-three feet. The applicant is not seeking any height or setback relief or relief of accessory parking requirements. Next slide, please. Above are the findings pursuant to Z R seventy-four ninety-six, including those non-applicable as identified by the applicant, including one, no requested relief of yard height setback requirements, two, no modification to public accessible open space requirements, and three, no reduction waiver of required parking spaces. This, also note at the end, the commission may prescribe appropriate additional conditions and safeguards to minimize adverse effects on the character of the surrounding area. Next slide, please. Following certification in September fourteenth, Queens Community Board Two recommended approval by a vote of thirty-two to two, to abstaining, with the conditions that first, ten percent of the industrial space be set aside at below-market rate, and that annual rents for that set aside be capped at three percent per year for ten years, and for tenants to be entitled to renew those leases with the same terms. The Borough President recommended approval of the related actions with the condition that the prevailing, prevailing wage be paid to both construction and maintenance workers and to consider C B two's condition for the below-market, uh, blue, below-market price industrial space. Next slide. Inclusion, per the applicant, the proposed development would provide moderate in-demand office space, but also, while also preserving space for modern industrial, light industrial users, reinforcing the industrial character of the neighborhood and reinforcing the objectives of the I B C. Consistent within your works planned, this further establishes Long Island City as a commercial hub while leveraging Long Island City's industrial backbone. For the applicant, the development would support job creation across the commercial office and industrial sector while locating them near transit and in walking distance of nearby housing. Thank you for your time and happy taking questions.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Eleven.
Yes, thank you, Scott. I have a question that's actually, you know, a detail about the tax amendment. And that is, I noticed that you, I believe, are proposing to eliminate the annual reporting requirement that applies in area, what is it, area is one? For an annual report about, from a third party about industrial tendencies and leasing activity and rents. And that's proposed not to apply to this additional area. What's the thinking behind that?
So yeah, we're not removing it, but yet we are limiting its applicability to the Brooklyn I B I A. We believe that, that agent feels that the, the notification of the owner of, and the deed restriction, excuse me, recording it into the, into the deed of the site sufficient for compliance, but we acknowledge that the third-party reporting was added at City Council for the I B I A in Brooklyn.
Okay, um, yeah, I think that is a, you know, certainly a topic we spent a lot of time talking about when the Brooklyn sites, but when the, when the permit was first established for twenty-five Kent. There's obviously some push and pull, back and forward, that meant that it was not in our original proposal to the City Council, but that it was certainly a, a provision that I think a number of us were enthusiastic about seeing included. Pleased to see that it came back with the council. I wonder about the wisdom of dropping it here, but I imagine we will be able to discuss that further in the post-hearing follow-up. But thanks for the background.
And Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. Thank you, Scott, for that presentation. Um, I have a question, and it's a minor issue on, on the bike storage. I know that, you know, and, and, and I wondered, you know, to extent that this is in a city bike catchment area, it's on a major bike lane, you know, the Queensborough Bridge is very popular in tune out of Manhattan. And, you know, I've, I've noticed, I live in Queens and, you know, the, off the closed street, there's been an explosion in micro-mobility that I think we want to continue to encourage and support and recognize that, you know, the zoning resolution was not created, you know, to reflect the current conditions that we have now, where we are seeing, you know, an increase in, you know, pedal power to, to electric-powered. You know, and I think we want to give folks and encourage more people to do that, particularly in light of what we might see as a decrease in, in, you know, subway service. So I know it's not required, but I would ask that the applicant consider for their own sake, you know, an increase in storage, safe storage, for those who might be arriving via bike or other micro-mobility options, given this location.
Sure, you know, obviously the applicant's listening to this now, but I'll, I'll see if there's any flexibility within the space already been provided beyond the forty-three or for other spaces within the parking available for the cars.
And, and there increasingly are ways to configure existing spaces so that you can fit bikes in, in a space, and there may be ways to accommodate more bikes in existing space. But I think, you know, it's particularly important right now and in that location in particular.
Yeah, and since the applicant would be managing the building, you know, that's something they, they should be able to speak to during the public hearing.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos, did you have your hand up?
I, I did, but I, but I think my question's been addressed based on what Commissioner Levin asked. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Eleven.
I just had two other things that I hope the applicant's going to be able to talk to us about at the hearing on Wednesday. And one is where Titan is thinking of going, if they've already identified alternate space, understanding their oper, operations and how this project will suit them. And secondly, how the applicant intends to market the industrial space, what thoughts they have about future industrial tenants.
Absolutely, and I could tell you that the representative of Titan will be part of the presentation team.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Okay, then we will see this again at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Hey, for future votes on December second, two thousand and twenty, a decision is scheduled for fifty-eight Wieland Avenue in Staten Island. And for post-hearing follow-up, there are a number of documents in your package regarding the Schubert Court Theater rehab. Staff is here to answer any questions, or any further questions, or anything that came from that package, the documents. Not seeing anything concludes the agenda, Chair.
Well, great. Thank you to all of the commissioners and see you on Wednesday morning. Stay dry. Bye.
Bye.